I will call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Monday, July 8th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. And a reminder that this meeting is being broadcast and recorded.
We will start with the town administrator's report while we wait for our 6:15 appointment.
So at the last meeting, I indicated to the board that I'd start assembling different aspects of the process for searching for the next police chief. The board wanted to take a look at the position description, and I did locate that and make some suggestions on how it could be modernized. The board indicated that a preliminary screening committee was probably the best way to go. That can only involve one board member, as was discussed. And also, maybe at fall town meeting, looking at the governing statute for the police chief. There's one statute, which is Section 97A of Chapter 41 that we have right now, that has kind of a more autonomous police chief, whereas Section 97 has more of an interactive relationship with the selectmen. I think with respect to the screening committee, I think you set a goal to finalize what that committee should look like toward the fall. And there is also a guidance document that the board has started to work on that talks about some of the qualities that you would expect in a police chief. So I don't know where the board wants to begin in that array of things, but we could have more discussion and advance your thinking on this a little bit each meeting, if you want to do something like that.
Have you received more comments back on the guidance document?
No, I have not.
Okay, I have some that I need to send you, so I think we'll continue to work on that. And if anyone has comments on the guidance document, send those forward. And then I have other updates on the job description that we should look at as well, that I'll give you my copy that's all marked up.
I did want to say thank you because that was good information for us to, for me to get my head around.
From the town.
On the two statutes.
By the two statutes, correct.
Yes, and the email from neighboring town was a great email. Yep, absolutely.
It really tried, it really crystallized the essence of the difference because it is subtle, okay? But it's telling you what it looks like in practice.
Yes.
And we have not decided at this point.
No, no, it's an option.
What addition, I mean, there's the qualifications that we want the chief to have, but then there is, how are we going to decide on a weak chief, strong chief?
You just keep ruminating over because if you're going to do it, it would be in November.
Yeah.
You might, maybe you don't make change a thing, I don't know. But we're trying to get you more information on what the fundamental difference is.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think we all understand the, more or less, the fundamental difference. It's how that fundamental difference will play out in Essex, and that's maybe what we need more information on. You know, and it's all going to be supposition, of course, because we don't really know. But just some examples, maybe, or something like that, so we can start to think about it a little bit more succinctly.
So examples from other communities?
Yeah, yeah, and, and how that might play out in Essex.
Yep, I can tell you that I did look into, I put out on the listserv that I have access to, the question about who's, who's got one and who's got the other. You know, what's typically determined as the strong chief statute, most people came back that way. There were only, it's about five to one, but there are towns out there. So I'll try to follow up with some of the, these folks, but I did reach out to the other two, and I didn't really get a very detailed response, so.
And I'm kind of wondering, I mean, what's the, what's the negative of it? Because I, I'm seeing it in my head by reading those two statutes as being just an oversight committee, you know, that we have oversight and more autonomy, so we know what's going on and not finding out when the grievance comes in that there's what's going on.
Yeah, it's more of a, of a tone-setting thing, it really is.
Brendan, when you were looking at the strong chief, weak chief communities, I heard that some communities have a strong chief, weak chief, fire chief as well. And I'm wondering, you know, which, you know, if any of those strong chief communities have a volunteer department or not, and how that factors in? Because I think that maybe there's, some of the communities want some synergy there or something. I'm not sure, I'm just wondering if that's something that is why it's so skewed, you know, and not necessarily because that's the best way to go in a community with a volunteer or a weak chief.
I can find that out, too.
And I guess it's more, does, does a chief under, is it 97A? Is, is, do they feel less powerful?
97A is what we have now.
Okay, so nine, what's the other 90?
97.
97, so do they, does the chief feel less powerful? And that's, I mean, because it really, to me, is I don't want to take over a, a police chief's job. I, I just want to, I think that the Board of Selectmen just want to understand what's going on before it hits the fan.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that we don't make some policy direction, that we don't really understand what the ramifications are of that, you know, so. You know, that's the other side of it.
True, but I think as far as the email we got from the community that does have it, who didn't have it before, gave me a stronger sense of that seems like, I think if there was negatives, we would have heard about the negatives, but maybe I'm wrong. Maybe they held back the negatives.
Yeah, and that's just one community.
Correct.
So we certainly need to talk about it and need more information, is all.
Yeah, I think we'll be bringing it back for many meetings to come.
So we can move on to the next item, which is the Public Water Supply Well Improvement Project. At the last meeting, the board discussed how a second attempt at going out to bid also returned a bid that was over our budget. So one thing that was on the table at the last meeting was whether our engineering firm would recommend a third attempt. And they have done just that. And so, and it will cost additional engineering because now it's, they've already done two designs and two bids. So if you're on board with that, they've got it set now so that the scope is much, even, even more narrow than the second attempt, and it should bring in a number. Maybe it's not going to be the number that they're predicting, but we have a little bit more than that. So maybe we get at least something that comes in that we can say, okay, let's award a contract.
Have we spent, if we go with the third one, have we already spent $80,000 on bidding?
No, we spent, we spent, I believe it was $200,000 on, on the design.
On the design, right.
Right, and the design and, and two bids, okay? That was the original budget, and it was probably a little bit, it was a little bit more money in the budget than necessary. Wouldn't have been billed for that, but they used up the second, or the, the remaining money on the second bid. They've hit their limit now, and they're saying, if you want us to do this again, we can, but we need more money.
Gotcha, okay.
And that's why we, we started with a little bit over $1 million, and that's why we only have about $800,000 to spend on construction.
Yeah, yep.
So is the board of the mind that you'd like to try the third attempt, including authorizing additional funding for the engineering services?
I think so, I think we, the work needs to be done, you know?
Yeah, I think our hands are tied, and flap against it as I emailed Brendan. This, we had nobody we can say, really, is this 500K, right? But, so I think our hands are tied, and we do have to go after it.
Okay, I will get that going, and hopefully, the third time around, we'll be bringing you results that we can actually afford. Now, moving to another.
I'm going to take a vote on that, just to make sure that it's on record. So I will entertain a motion to go out for a third bid for the well project.
So move.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Including additional funding for the design?
Yep.
All right. So now, moving toward another topic.
This is very in his head.
Yes, now, you know, back in 2000, it was written in the original intermunicipal agreement with the city of Gloucester that when secondary treatment finally came to where the city had to do it, the town was going to pay its portion of it. And it says in that original version, and it still says it today, even in the amended version, 3.125% of the cost of secondary treatment will be borne by Essex. The question is going to be, is the city going to put that on the general tax rate? Because it's a large amount of money, are they going to put it to their ratepayers? Or are they going to do a combination of the two? And no matter what happens, the town needs to follow that. Because the part that goes on the rate, we should, I think, get the advantage of our wholesale rate for any rate-funded piece. And then the rest of it is straight math. Well, we funded this much of the project through taxation to Gloucester, or through taxation, let's say, and that would be a payment that Essex would have to make. But I don't think we'd have to do it in a lump sum, because the city is going to borrow this money, and the city's going to pay back if they did a combination of rate and taxation. Every year, they just are going to raise the amount of money they need to pay the debt service. So we shouldn't be expected to have to pay, you know, each time either. Now, interestingly, the, the town of Essex's payment for the sewer system is going to round off in FY '26, which is about when they're going to be asking us to kick in for secondary. There will be some money from what we've collected in betterment repayment because we collected 2% interest, and we're paying back zero and sometimes less, in some cases, less than zero on the loans. So if there's, you know, a couple of million dollars in there, we'll see what, what it comes to once, once we're all closed out. The town could consider, because that all came out of the, the better, either the betterment or the, or the rate, but I, most of it, the betterment, that would be an appropriate source of funding to defray some of this cost. Again, we don't know what this is all going to look like, we don't know what the total is, but think about that, too. In fact, we can't even access that money until we've declared our project completely closed and paid off.
Brendan, does Essex have to use ratepayers to pay this 3.5%?
They don't have to use.
We don't, we're not bound by that?
No, it just says the town has to come up with the money.
And, you know. That's what we've been doing so far, because it's been.
Well, when you look at this, when you look at the sewer project, the capital project, right? 72% of the project was paid for by betterment, so people that have access to the sewer. And 28% of the project was paid for by general taxation because the town government has a stake in how much flow. Now, when we went and did the borrowing on the SRF recently for the water filtration plant, we rounded that to 70/30, okay?
Right, I remember that.
So you could use something like that, so we have to, we have to determine how it's going to come to us. And then we have to determine what that looks like in a payback. Maybe you do fold in some of the money that was accrued from the betterment repayments, some new taxation, and maybe some rate pay, but that all has to be crunched.
But this isn't keeping the existing properties on sewer now, it's not adding any streets?
Correct, it's, it's we flow to the Gloucester Treatment Plant, and the Gloucester Treatment Plant has to be upgraded to plus.
But it's not all of our properties, it is only certain streets, it's not all of our properties. So this is not improving and adding other areas?
No, it's just allowing the people who already have access to flow to a plant that has the proper level of upgrade in the eyes of the DEP and the EPA.
Will the upgrade of the treatment plant allow for, I know they're going to be adding more sections of Gloucester into the treatment plant, or hope to anyway, will it allow more from Essex, or are we?
Not without changing the IMA to pay more toward the upgrade and to change our actual maximum available daily flow. Okay, those things right now are set. And we're just talking about, based on those things, how much do you owe Essex? And how are you going to pay?
We don't know whether or not there'll be additional capacity available to Essex once they do the upgrade, and then if there were, we could.
We'd have to negotiate more flow and at what price.
Right, yep.
So it's possible, but it's not in the, in the agreement right now. And I can say that I am going to be meeting at the mayor's office on July 17th if one selectman wanted to come along.
I will be out of town, but I'd love to come along.
I think it's 11:15. Does somebody want to?
Alva, do you have any interest in going to the meeting on July 17th?
It's possible, I think I'm free.
Okay, so let's communicate with BZ, if you can't go, then I will go.
Okay.
And I think that the Board of Public Works may try to send someone as well. So they understand from the beginning just what it is the city's doing and asking, okay?
Okay.
We at the time?
We're at the time, yep. Harbor Master Fiallo, if you'd like to join us at the microphone, that'd be great. And when you speak into the microphone, six or eight inches away, and just speak up because we are being recorded and broadcast, so people at home need to be able to hear you.
Okay.
Thank you. So this evening, we have Harbor Master Dan Fiallo to discuss the Harbor Master training requirements. As the board will recall, we have signed two 270-day waivers to kind of delay or postpone the Harbor Master from having to meet all of the requirements set forth by the Harbor Master, the HTP, Training Council, HTC. So Dan wanted to join us this evening to discuss those and to kind of explain why he hasn't done that and the courses that haven't been offered, and so on and so forth, so you have the microphone.
Okay, so I brought Rosemary Lesch with me as well. She's a member of the Training Council and the Rockport Harbor Master. So I think the, the panic is the word temporary on these waivers because you see temporary and you think that things should be completed in a timely manner. Speaking from 2019 appointment, we've had a lot of delays in getting some of the Harbor Master training off the ground, or I should say, the Training Council has had some delays. So the first Law Enforcement Academy was approved for 2019, so it would have been just when I was appointed. That was the first time that that academy was offered, so a lot of it had to do with the police reform and how things were going to get separated and where we fell. And obviously, being separate from the police, I fall under some different training requirements. Just to answer some questions, because I knew there were some questions about the academy. It's 248 hours, and it's $1,000 for the class. So the temporary waiver, there, there is a deadline, but a lot of the communities are working on temporary waivers in different, either the Harbor Master or Assistance, and those get extended after the 270-day period. I've made some progress towards being certified Harbor Master. There's a lot of communities that I hear from the president of the Training Council that haven't made as much progress as I have, so I'm kind of chipping away towards being certified in different aspects. And, and one of the things, I'll hand you guys these packets, but under the Mass General Law 10219A, that states, "Upon petition to the council by the appointing authority, a person appointed as a Harbor Master or as an Assistant Harbor Master on a full-time or permanent, part-time basis in a city or town where a harbor is located may be exempted by the council from the requirements of this section before exercising Harbor Master powers while that person is awaiting training." So if the training's not being offered, I fall under the awaiting the training. It's like the chicken and the egg. If the training's not there to take, I'm not able to take the training. The Law Enforcement Academy that I referenced earlier was down in Chatham. It was 31 days of, I think it was 80 hours of it were in-person, and the rest was remote. So it's definitely something that I'd like to take when my schedule allows, but I think, based on the fact I have a full-time job, that's a little tough for me to get that component as it stands right now. But I just wanted to hand you guys some prior support of sorts. Those are the components on the front of what's required.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
So you can see that I've made progress over the last couple of years. COVID obviously was a factor in a lot of the trainings not being offered. And I try to continue to progress towards, towards all those being fulfilled. Keep in mind, if it's, if it's somebody else that comes in, they still are able to get a temporary waiver. If it's, if it's a police officer situation, even though they have the Law Enforcement Academy, those trainings are still required to be accomplished.
So Dana, these, whatever it is, 10, 12 things here, are they, do they comprise the 240 hours required?
The, the 248 hours is the top.
The top one.
Just the top one, okay.
So these are. So it could be anywhere from a one day to a three day to, to a little bit further.
They, and they don't break that down into modules that you can?
They don't, and, and a lot of that training is kind of in progress, it's on that sheet. So I know there's some remote sections on there, which I hope to get accomplished by the end of the summer. Sometimes it's tough with that 270-day waiver, I think that was signed on June 22nd. So you, I'm losing July, not losing, but July and August really aren't training times for Harbor Masters. So a lot of these bigger communities were, are not shutting down till November, and they're not, they, they pick up again in March, so it leaves you a very small window in the winter for these training opportunities to happen. They need to have a student quorum, I don't think they're going to do it for one person or, or three people. I think they look to have 25, 30-person classes. And they also look to have instructors that are available, both financially and obviously available, available to teach these classes, and that's been kind of a challenge for the Training Council themselves.
Dan, how does the Harbor Master Law Enforcement piece of this compare to, if you know, either the Full-Time Police Academy, or the Part-Time Police Academy, or the Bridge Academy? How does that fit into that, and is there any sort of correlation?
It's a little bit of a Rosemary question.
I'm not sure I can give you a straight answer, but when we came through the Harbor Master training in our era, the Reserve Academy was what was required, and the Reserve Academy was going strong. And then the post program, which Sergeant in the back of the room can probably nod his head at, has made it extremely difficult for Harbor Masters who want to be law enforcement in the harbor department as opposed to being, working a road job, or being a reserve officer. The 290 hours or whatever is made, 70 hours has made it, almost prohibited for someone in a summer position to accomplish that in one fell swoop. Dan has covered a lot of the, right on the, on the money, on a lot of the, on all of the topics. Unfortunately, COVID threw a real monkey wrench in the, in the training and the personal upfront classrooms. We've done a lot of Zoom as much as we can, and, and the council's working really hard to establish these courses.
Thank you.
I just have one follow-up question. Do you see the council as a matter of course, continuing to issue the 270-day waivers for smaller communities like Essex?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, back when I was attending the Harbor Master Training Council meetings via Zoom in the beginning, when Post Commission, when, when the police reform stuff happened and Post Commission stepped in and they were doing away with the part-time academy and going with the bridge and mandating full-time academy, my question for you is, I recall on those Zoom calls that there was a lot of things up in the air, whether they were going to be required or not required. So is this a complete list of things that are definitely required, or are these still recommendations?
It's, again, chicken or the egg, it's, it's required, but they've, that first academy got off the ground in 2019, so even to get trainings approved has been kind of a challenge. So that is what the council requires. But the syllabus is, for a few of those things, I know are not etched in stone yet. It has to be approved at the state level. So some of those things that are on that sheet of paper, I think they're still waiting for that actual course to be 100%, and I think it's kind of a work in progress for everybody, even at the state level.
Okay, so these are required. Now, this list of trainings that are required, is this specifically to become certified?
Yes.
And is cert, being certified a requirement of being a part-time Harbor Master?
It's a state mandate, I believe?
State mandated.
Okay.
Of 2008, Senator Ta formed the Massachusetts Harbor Master Training Council, and that, we felt, gave Harbor Masters a whole, brought us up to a whole level higher standard and gave Harbor Masters a lot of authority and training and brought us to, into a reputable profession, which we certainly feel we are.
Okay.
But if a waiver is granted, or granted continually, it does not give the town any less standing in the eyes of the council, correct? Because we've done, we've correctly sought and obtained a waiver.
Correct. And Dan's a licensed captain, 100 ton, that covers a lot of territory in what is required of Harbor Mastering and being an EMT.
And there's no limit to the number of waivers that you know of?
No.
Yeah.
And Dan's not standing alone up here, other than me. He has, there's others in his position have come to the council, and, and they're treading water, for lack of a better word, to stay current and do the best they can to stay current.
So this requirement of medical emergency, marine medical emergency, as an EMT, he's not got some of that, or?
He covers it, he has it, he covers it.
I just haven't been through the specific class for that.
Dan could teach the class, I'm, I'm not, he really could, I mean.
And that's why I'm, I'm asking, because I feel like, shouldn't he be grandfathered? Because he is an EMT, especially in a, this community? Yeah, and then the other one was also the voting under influence course.
I think that's been offered one time since 2019.
We worked with the environmental police on that particular course, and they're right, right, very, offering all of their services when they have the classes.
So at the state level, it's still, it's not very organized yet itself.
It's trying to be organized.
Right, but it's not yet, so there, that's why nothing's being offered or sporadically offered and all that sort of stuff. So they haven't gotten their act completely together.
I think when the post came through, it kind of changed a lot of things. And I think, I think everybody's working to do what they can at different levels to try to get us what we need.
Yeah.
Historically, there were 351 hours that you had to obtain to be a certified Harbor Master. And we went to Senator Ta to ask if we could make this a state law, and we did that. And pretty much the breakdown of the 351 hours is what is required here, but it, it's coming from a different direction.
Sure, yeah.
Now, are all of these requirements set forth, again, outlined here, are these because we have a civilian Harbor Master? So I guess my question is, if the Harbor Master Department fell under the Chief of Police, would these still be required?
The other require, the, all the requirements would be required. They'd be required to go to the Harbor Master Academy.
So the, the Chief of Police would still have to do the Harbor Master Law Enforcement?
Yes, and, yes, and become licensed captains and EMS.
Really? Wow.
Okay.
We'll let them join us, should they work hard enough to get here.
Does anybody else have any questions?
No.
No, Brendan, do you have any questions?
No, I'm just going to track the 270 that we're on right now, bring it to the board's attention when we get near the next one. If you have questions for the Harbor Master, he can tell you where he is. But where this is a, we're not the only town, small towns are having trouble with this, especially with the part-time Harbor Master. I'm not sure what else you can do at this point in time.
Hopefully, two more things are crossed off the next time.
Sure, which we're grateful and, you know, appreciate that you're working toward getting the list taken care of. And we also understand that you're, this is a part-time job in the summer, and you have a full-time job. So going to Cape Cod, I don't remember the town, but going there is not necessarily something you have the ability to do at this point. So thank you for coming in and answering all the questions, and we'll be in touch if we have any other questions. Thank you both, thank you for coming in.
So is our task to either request a waiver?
Dan, Dan fills it out, and then he brings it to us.
Just making sure we were aware.
Right, so there's a fresh one in place, so we have about 260 days or something left on it.
We, we basically, at the last meeting, we said that we were not partial on the idea of signing another 270-day waiver. We said, we just signed it, we want you to complete the requirements before you come to us with another waiver. He was coming this evening.
He was coming this evening to say to us.
I can't.
Basically, I can't, but also.
There may be more things done when he sees you next, but not, not the, the top one.
The full thing, yeah.
Probably not.
And also, when he and I had a conversation, when we put him on the agenda to come in and discuss this this evening, he also told me that they don't offer all of these trainings all the time.
That's what he was saying.
So, that's what he was saying, so he doesn't have an opportunity to always do them. And when they come up, if they're online, I think he's jumping on them, but if they're in person down in, on Cape Cod, it's difficult.
Yeah, good information.
Want to continue with the report? Okay. So the North Shore Coastal Coalition met here, up in this room, on July 2nd. Senator Ta coordinates that. And right now, one major thing that they are looking at is a grant that Babson College will be applying for. It's a grant that hopes to take elements of the, the blue economy, which are, you know, vocations and industries that are aligned well with, with marine, with the marine environment. This could be anything from fishing to what we, we're talking about, how we keep pace with sea level rise with marsh management techniques. And the, the grant would seek to tease out industries that might be in a good position to launch toward this stuff, but they need assistance, and they call that an accelerator. And Babson is, is a leader in this field, where they look at a particular budding industry and they help something to get off the ground.
Startups.
Yep.
Startup companies and things like that.
So.
They didn't provide what the grant number is?
$15 million, no.
No, no, the grant to look at, I wanted to go online, I couldn't find it.
Oh. Uh, it's a NOAA grant, I can try to get you, Alva, I'll get you the exact name of it.
Cause I did find NOAA grants, I couldn't figure out which one they were.
It's the accelerator one, and it's listed, I think that's what it's actually called, the NOAA accelerator or something grant.
Thank you.
And, you know, it covers from, you know, it covers New Eng, the New England shoreline, so it's not like $15 million is going to go into any one particular community.
Yeah.
But what is learned about industries will be beneficial to all. And so there is a, a letter of support being requested that is going to be written up. And I'll ask, when we finish this discussion, that, that you'll vote on whether you want to have someone sign that. There's also, the Division of Marine Fisheries was at the Coastal Coalition meeting, and they're going for legislation right now, there's a bill pending, to allow DMF to step in when there's abandoned fishing gear, because that fishing gear keeps fishing, even though there's no harvester pulling the fish up, so the lobsters, the fish die in these abandoned or ghost traps and ghost nets. And right now, only the environmental police can intervene in that, they, they don't really do that. Uh, and it's still considered personal property of the, of the fish harvester, or the, or the shellfish harvester. And so uh, they're also going to be looking for a letter of support that's going to be put together for that. And so is the board in favor of authorizing the chairman to sign the grant letter of support and the legislation, letter of support when these are offered?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to have the chairman sign a letter of support outside of a meeting for the North Shore Coastal Coalition when it becomes available.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The loss control grant application, I was able to turn that in prior to this meeting. The board had already discussed how, since we're going for upgrades in our video surveillance camera system, that type of thing is eligible for this grant that we go for every year, the maximum is $10,000, but that would help defray a portion of the cost. And I just would like a vote of the board authorizing, the applic, authorizing the application.
Was this ratified? Cause we talked about this at the safety meeting, or is this not ratified?
It, it did get turned in, but not long ago, the timing of the meeting versus the, the date, so.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the Maya loss control grant application.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, also, another grant that's being teed up is that the, our OSHA coordinator, which is the Board of Health Administrator, is working on the Department of Industrial Accidents Training Grant. We have been the recipient and lead community on this the first time, with, and with Manchester as our partner. The second time we applied for this, Manchester applied and we were the partner, and now we're going for a third time. And it's $25,000, uh, and there's a variety of safety-related courses that the administrator has put in her scope of work. And so I'm recommending that the chairman, the board vote to authorize it, the, the board vote to ratify the chairman's approval of the grant application, because the deadline was prior to this meeting.
I will entertain a motion to vote to ratify the chairman's approval of the grant for the Department of Industrial Accidents Annual Safety Grant.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brendan, if you want to move on the second page, down toward the bottom, consider the amendment to the Town of Essex Alcohol Beverage Licensing Regulations to include a new section for the review and approval of requests for new and expanded outdoor seating with alcohol service, if you want to talk about our meeting, and then we can talk about.
At the last meeting, the, the board felt that it was necessary to get some advice from council with respect to this evolving area, since there's now a kind of a, a differ, different requirement for expanded outdoor seating, or new outdoor seating. One of the things that we talked about was whether or not that can still be offered or approved as a temporary measure, season by season. And we have determined that it is not available in that format. So anyone who wants to put new outdoor seating in, or expand the existing outdoor seating that might already be in a license, needs to come in as if that is a permanent alteration of premises. The only difference is that the ABCC does not need to approve it after the local board approves it. So it is the same thing, the same process, the same forms, as coming in for a permanent alteration of premises. Uh, another question that came up was whether or not having a mixed drink that was mixed for off-premises consumption could be consumed elsewhere on a particular establishment's property. And we've determined that that cannot happen. Off-premises means the party takes the mixed drink and goes somewhere else, maybe it's their house, maybe it's their friend's house, uh, but it's not a, uh, it's definitely not on the property that's owned by the licensed premises, even if it's, even if that portion of the property is not part of the license itself. Then we took a look at what is actually necessary to have a successful application. The board talked about a variety of departments, town departments that need to be consulted. Council agreed, because many of them are independent authorities, on portions of things that they oversee. So I put together a rough draft of how those different things could be incorporated into a change to the board's regulations, including an application form. Council helped us fill in how it should be worded. It's my understanding that this type of regulation change or policy has been instituted in several communities, and it's really just now Essex needs to catch up with that, because if you're going to do it, it needs to be a permanent alteration, but you also need to really lay out what, what you're expecting and what you're requiring. So I've got that to you in draft, and it would serve as a guide if you wanted to move forward for, for applicants who are desiring this sort of thing.
Everyone had time to review it and send back comments. Does anyone have any questions, or want to make additions, changes?
This is more or less what we went through a year ago or so, whenever that was.
Correct, it was a couple of years ago. And it's, it's now just in writing, so that it's not each time the applicant comes, we actually have it in printed form, so that we can refer back to it.
Right.
Right, and it allows the applicant to go and collect all these things first, because the board is not going to consider the application complete until all of the departments that are required for sign-off are signed off. Then, then you don't need to be concerned with, you know, you start something, but then you don't have one of the things that some other department wants.
And there's also required timeframes that we have to hit. Once an application comes in, we have to have this certain time periods for hearings and publications, and two publications, and notar, about our notification. So this outlines that we wouldn't, that the time clock doesn't start until it actually comes to us, and it doesn't come to us until the other department sign off. So that instead of bringing the applicant back, meeting after meeting after meeting, they can just take this.
Right.
Go to the departments, if they can get it done in a week, then it's a week. And if it's a couple of weeks, it's a couple of weeks. But it takes us out of the mix until the end, so that that's when the time starts.
And if this particular department says, well, we don't want to sign off, and the applicant wants to avail themselves of anything that's allowed by law in the way of a, an appeal or a variance, they can go through that process, and then the department could sign off saying, you know, approved with variance, or approved upon appeal, or whatever. But the point is, they can go through all of that, and then come and say, here we have it. It would come to our office, and then Pam and I would look at the meeting schedule, look at the advertisement regimen, and make sure that we pick a date where all that stuff could get done in advance. So we've, we've kind of, you know, put it all together, and we've got something that will, will meet the intent of what that, that change in law was.
So a one-time thing unless.
Yeah, because it's a permanent alteration.
Unless the establishment wants to change.
That's, that's right.
Yeah.
Or add more or something like that later, yeah.
So is the, when you put in the request, is it under the building inspector that says, okay, we're putting in 20 seats outside, and, and then if they wanted to put in 20 more, would they have to go through the process again?
Yes, because they're only going to get what the alteration applies for the first time.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to make sure that it.
Which is the way it is right now, if you had a, if you had an indoor restaurant and you wanted to make a change, and that change gets approved, well, if you want to do something else later, then you have to come back again and go through the, and in that case, for indoors, you actually have to still go through the ABCC for the approval after the local board. It's for this outdoor seating where just that dropped off.
So, and then with the one through eight, is there, is there an order? Like, does the building inspector say, oh, no, no, you have to get the plumbing inspector to approve first? Or you gotta, you know, like, is there an order that these should be done, or all being done at the same time?
They can, the applicant can approach all of these, because they're all going to have different requirements and, and different timelines. Certainly, our office can help get people in touch with some, some of these people, we have some part-time people, and try to keep them connected and, and work with them toward this.
I just wanted to make it comprehensive, so that they didn't go to, you know, the Department of Public Works, and he said, okay, you gotta go, I don't want to cause confusion and frustration.
Right.
If we could help it.
Yep.
I think, Alva, the order in which it's laid out is really the order in how they should approach the departments. I think we were careful about doing that, making sure that we went to the building inspector first.
Why go through all of this if you find that, hey, you don't have the parking?
Right.
It's not going to happen.
That, that was my concern, I didn't want somebody to get to, you know, the Board of Health, stage four, and then find out, oh, no, you.
Right, so I think this was laid out in a way that would prevent you from kind of going on to the next, if the, if the first or the one just before doesn't allow it.
Yeah.
You know, and if somebody does come in and wants to talk over this list, you know, one of the things we'll say is, well, okay, how about sewer flow? Do you know whether you have that or not? And, you know, you can have to, up to 1,000 more, but otherwise, it's a town meeting vote. You might want to wait to see if you get that, you know, there's many different ways you could go.
Nuances with every single one.
Right.
Might change.
Depends on the situation, right.
So is this just an example of an application, or is this kind of what the application is?
This will be for us to vote on.
This is what I'm, my looking at this, if I was the building inspector and I wanted to put notes, meaning, you know, okay, as long as they do this and this. Okay, as long as they, there's no place to put notes, so that's my only comment, would be a place where each of these departments.
Well, each, each of these are probably going to issue their own permit in, in.
So it's just a matter of getting a permit and then going to the notes?
And they're going to sign this and give some kind of written thing from their department that goes into this package. As far as the application itself, that is, you know, all of the state forms need to be used, there's this required application components, they're all listed out here. And so this, that you're looking at, Alva, is just the sign-off sheet that says, okay, everybody's good with moving forward, but the, the applicant has to have all the application components as well, when they come to us with the, with the sign-off sheet all completed.
Yeah, this form is just for us.
Yeah.
To see, yeah.
But I think what.
There'll be attachments and stuff.
What Al is saying is that, I'm going to use the plumbing inspector as, as a, one, if the plumbing inspector says you need eight bathrooms, there should be a box for comments that says, "Application pending approval until eight bathrooms are installed," or something, I think is what you're saying, is you want to see comments, so we know what is the holdup. We're not going to actually get this back until they've been completed, but.
Well, that was the point of that, it was like, it's not going to get signed.
You won't even see it until it's taken care of, okay.
Okay, I'm going to use my get run over by a bus theory. But what if the plumbing inspector dies? Don't tell Rick I said that. And this, you know, where does the, is there someplace that all this stuff goes into notes and, and the next person could come in place and not delay?
Normally, each department would keep their own record and their own set of notes on it, but.
That's what happened with the food truck, why we got delayed, because the environmental person was in hospital, had everything searched, and we didn't know that. So that really did happen?
Thank you, yeah.
So with the plumbing inspector, Alva, that's going to be an online permitting process, so that's electronic. So provided that he's putting notes in the actual application, we can access those. That will be the same for a building inspector, plumbing inspector.
Probably all of them.
Board of Health.
Yeah.
Yep.
Electrical.
Maybe not.
Not police, fire.
Or public works.
Or not public works yet.
Public works is really just a flow calculation.
That's just a flow calculation, and really, the applicants tend to know if they have enough flow when they call Brendan and start this process, because he has all of that data at his fingertips. Do we want to make any other comments? Do we want to vote on this? Are we comfortable with the, it as it's laid out before us?
Having the name of the different inspectors, if it's somebody else, say, you know, Bill Sanborn leaves and somebody else is in, does it matter that it has his name in there?
Well, we could put.
Or do we want to just have a generic building inspector, plumbing inspector, you know, concom?
We could put a, we could put a line where they print and, print their name, and then sign.
Yeah.
And, so this application is done online?
No.
No. The only piece of this that's done online is the ABCC application for an alteration of premises. It'll, it gets printed.
It's not.
You print out the form and you do it, so that's an online application.
So is, say a new restaurant comes into town and wants to do this, the, VZ and Pam would help them, show them where the different sites they're supposed to go to on our website and the ABCC, so that, I mean, I just, there's no link that says here, here's the requirements here, here's that type of thing.
So when you go to the Board of Selectmen, there's, Pam has a page for the licensing clerk, and all of the applications are on that page.
I don't. I don't think we need to look at it further, other than the comments we've made.
Do you have any other comments?
I don't. I, I think that it's, it's very in-depth. I've never done, you know, these types of requests. So I, I would say that there's a lot of information here.
This is just the final sign off. Everything, all the work's been done when it gets here. I mean, we won't even look at it, probably if it's not approved in every category.
That's right.
Right. You can join us at the microphone? And Maureen, this is about the policy.
I get it. I already did this policy two years ago. My name is Maureen Woodman. I live at 94 Martin Street in Essex, Massachusetts. So we came here two, three weeks ago. We were told that you were going to go get some advice from council. Again, who is the council? Just so I know. Who is the council that helped on this?
KP Law.
Okay. And how many of them were involved?
Our point person, which we refer to as town council.
And what was the outline that was used for that meeting? Was it anything that Susan and I brought to the last meeting to help? Or did you just go back to what I was to do two years ago?
We, we rely on competent counsel. I'm not going to get into our discussion with them.
What, what was the question to the council?
I'm not going to get into our, our individual, specific discussion points with town council.
But I thought that we came here, voiced our opinion, and you said you, you needed more advice and you were going to go ask for help.
Right. And I opened this conversation generally by saying that we talked with council.
Mm-hmm.
There's no way to do a temporary application. It has to be a process laid out for a permanent alteration. Right? I've said that. And then one of the things you mentioned was how, where you might be able to consume a mixed drink that was mixed for off-premises consumption.
That's apples and oranges. One is outside dining with alcohol. One is to bring alcohol out of the premises. There's two laws that were passed April 1st.
I understand that.
Okay.
You indicated that one strategy might be to just send people that have a mixed drink to somewhere else on your property. So it has a bearing on whether or not you would even apply for this. And what I'm saying is, what we've learned is that that's not what that particular new feature of the law would allow you to do.
That's on, that's on carrying the liquor out of the business. Let's go back to the alteration of premise of the property in those questions. So in total respect for what Alva's saying there, when I did go through this, I did run through hoops, Alva. I did go back and forth to departments multiple times. I just did this again with another permit in town. And like I said to you, what happened, that list does have to go in a correct order. And the reason the list has to go into an order is we got all the way to the bottom of that list and then the bathroom component, which was the most expensive component, showed up. So before one of these 15 restaurants would try to do something, if they ran all around, like, you know, going here and there and there, and they passed with environment and they passed with the building inspector and they passed with whoever else you have up there, the Department of Water I went to, and then they get to this and they're like, I had no idea. Or even better, if they get to their SOAR tag and they don't have enough SOAR to begin with. So I do think that you should really put some time, if you had a common courtesy for the person running around to do this, that it went in order for them to be able to make a financial decision. Is it going to profit their business if they have to spend $150,000, $200,000 to make this happen?
Right. So we have, we have a description about each one of the departments and the types of things that they're going to be looking at.
So on the description of the plumbing code, what is the bathroom code? What is the bathroom code on the description?
It says that the plumbing inspector has to approve it and.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you just said you put a description on there. So.
Of what each department is going to do.
But it doesn't tell.
Generally.
But it doesn't tell what the description is. You have to go to the department to find out.
Absolutely, because they're independent authorities. Yep.
And the changes.
Yeah. And.
But I think what Alva's saying is, you know, if you, if you went in order.
Yeah. I, I would say that the, the restaurant might want to come and meet with the selectmen's office so we can go over everything. Hey, this is what this really means.
That's what we did. That's what Woodmans did, Steve, Doug and I, two years ago. And then we got to the end and we found out we needed eight toilets outside that couldn't be a porta potty. They had to be permanent. And then we couldn't do that either because we were so close to the marsh. So that was like a real wild card, right? Is the environment on that?
Conservation Commission. Yes, correct.
So maybe it makes sense for the board to hold, not take a vote on the policy, have Town Administrator Zuberke send this to the Chamber of Commerce and even the Essex Merchants Group, and we can get feedback from the businesses on the policy.
It's going to slow down your ability to issue a.
That's, that's why I was trying to do it tonight, so that if we voted on this tonight, the process could start.
There's only the two of us here, so I don't think we're going to be able to get this outdoor license. Remember, it expires October 31st. So we have August.
No, it's a permanent alteration of premises.
Permanent, but the outside liquor for the state of Massachusetts expires October 31st. It's only a seasonal component.
That's not my understanding.
Okay. 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 You can look that up. You can take a look at that.
So my goal was not to delay approving it so that we could start the process. It's a policy. It falls into the purview of the Board of Selectmen. But if we want to delay it so that it can be circulated, we can do that. But there are two people in the room that.
Maureen has a point, but every establishment will have a different criteria that's going to stop them. And.
No matter what, they need toilets.
Yeah, they may have all the toilets, but maybe they don't have the right amount of parking or something else. So where do you put, you know, the order is the most generic order, the, the most likely one. But you can't, you can't assume that everybody is the same, you know? I mean, if you had enough toilets, you wouldn't have any problem. But that's just how it fell out.
Well, the other thing is you have to be so many feet to the toilet.
Well, that's right.
Which is another.
That's right.
So again, I, I went through all those things that are on, I'm assuming, I don't know if there's another one there I didn't go through. And that every time you went to one, you got into something else that no one told you about. No one even, even the person in that department didn't tell you until you went back. You know, I kind of describe it like bringing the witch's broom back to the man after I caught the broom. And then they're like, oh, sorry, we can't help you. Like, it, it was really weird what happened to us. I mean, you guys were all there, you know.
We do know. And unfortunately, what happened.
You did three months on it.
So what happened, Maureen and I, and Peter and I were both on the board at the time, we will recall, that what ended up happening was that as we were meeting, different inspectors, boards, committees were like, when are we getting our day in court? So they, you know, you, you said they had to have restrooms, but what about us? We're, we're the Board, we're the Conservation Commission. We're on the river. We need to be able to look at the application and make sure that it fits within the criteria of the Wetlands Protection Act. So then you came back and I said, Conservation Commission wants to have you meet with them. And then DPW said, well, we, and this is all, you know, I don't know if these were the departments, but said, we need to talk to them about sewer flow. So we said, now DPW wants to meet with you. This wasn't a witch hunt against the Woodmans to make sure that we made you jump through hoops. This was everyone wanting.
I don't think it was against us. I think it's just in general that I think Alva has a great point, that order will help businesses make a decision because most businesses run on profit and money.
So I think.
You're not going to spend $300,000 if at the end of the year, they're only going to take in $15.
Do you want, you want Board of Health to be the first one that people say?
I don't know. I think the SOAR.
I really think it depends on the circumstance at the property. I would not.
I think the SOAR is probably the most, the SOAR ticket.
I would say. It's, but you can look at, it's all written down, what each one involves, you know, a little bit about what generically it is. So.
You can go to whichever one you want to.
Right.
And let me just be clear. This is just to add outdoor seating with alcohol, not outdoor seating without alcohol. Is that correct?
A common vituress permit would have to still be issued by the Board of Selectmen, even without alcohol. So there would still be something like that that would have to happen. It just wouldn't be the state alcohol forms. But the, the board may have those questions, just.
So the people that have outside dining now are okay because it's already a permanent.
It's in their permit. Yeah.
It's already permanent. It's, it's not an alteration of premise. It's an existing premise.
Correct.
Is that correct?
But if somebody wanted to do even just food and no alcohol, there still needs to be a change to the common vituress permit. And that's this board.
And then you're going to just continue to go with the one-day liquor licenses and the one-day entertainment licenses at these outside facilities as you've been doing?
In the absence of an application, I think that's what the board has been looking to do, in the absence of a permanent alteration. Yeah.
And you feel like this is the best possible situation that you can offer the businesses in Essex right now? This roadmap?
I think it's comprehensive and I think it's going to spell everything out. So it's going to be a guide to doing it the right way once, for lack of a better term.
Susan, you have anything on this? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You could always amend the policy, the regulations later if you find that something has come up that's not anticipated.
Right. But if we approve them this evening, we can.
They can get.
Put it on the website.
That's correct. That's correct. And then if something comes up during any application process, will you say, that would be good to change, not only for this applicant, but for everyone else to come because something got brought to light? Well, then you can make a change.
Right.
Yeah. And that was my only other thing as, as far as with each of these steps, having a link to the, to the site so that before you fill out the application, you can go and say, okay, so the, it's got to be 300 feet. It's got to have so many bathrooms per.
Well, that's.
Oh, that's.
I know that's all there.
It's, we, that's the plumbing inspector. That's, we would never be able to articulate all that.
Exactly. I didn't know if there's a website for them to look at to get a high level.
It would be the state plumbing code and it's not going to help them.
Oh, it's not really. Okay.
And it's the same thing with the building inspector. That's state building code.
And they're independent authorities. They're autonomous.
Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
I will entertain a motion to approve the Town of Essex policy procedures and rules for the use of outdoor space to expand existing alcohol service.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll mention that the request about the botchy court should be tabled tonight because that person wasn't ready to provide information.
Okay.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the weekly vendor warrant for fiscal year 24 in the amount of $131,234.63.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will entertain a motion to approve the weekly vendor warrant in the amount, or for fiscal year 25 in the amount of $2,733, 33. Two, $2,733,070.90.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the Selectmen's June 24th, 2024 open meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brendan, Essex River dredging project update?
So today, we had a meeting with, that was coordinated by Senator Tarr. We had some representatives of our federal legislators present. We had Selectmen, Fitman, myself, the, the private marinas. And the, the federal dredging project will be out to bid. If it wasn't today, it would be by tomorrow, we were told. A reference to the private marinas wanting to piggyback on the federal project is in the solicitation with contact information. The bid deadline is on or about August 7th, and the award will be by early September. One thing that got pointed up by the meeting today, and I've already spoken with the harbor master about it, is that by September 25th, so long as there is a viable bid, all moorings that are in the dredge area will have to be removed, meaning the mooring block. Okay? We checked with Manchester as to what they did when they went through their dredging project. And what they did is they had the, we were told by different people at the meeting that, you know, you could either let each individual block owner remove it or you could remove it all and then backcharge the owner. That's the preferred method because in cases where we've left it, they've left it to individual owners, invariably there's somebody that doesn't listen and you end up with problems when the dredging contractor's coming through. So in Manchester, they went with the recommended method. They hired their own contractor for a standard amount that would include both the removal of the block and then the return of the block after the dredging is done. And during the mooring renewal period next spring, the mooring owner could be assessed, whatever that fee is going to be. So they don't have to do anything. They just have to pay the money, the in and out money. Okay? Or the out and in money.
Brendan, are there any moorings or was this discussed, because I had to leave a little early, that need to be removed because, not because it's being dredged, but because the scowl and the barge and all that have to get through? And, you know, most of them have a winter stick or whatever at their moorings. Did they talk about that at all?
They didn't talk about that. It was, it was, their concern was the, the bucket hitting mooring blocks under the surface of the water.
But the channel is presumably wide enough.
Yeah. They didn't say that that was an issue. And we're already working to try to get an overlay of the federal channel with our GPS coordinates for where the mooring blocks are so that we can actually come to how, how many are we talking about? It's not all the moorings. It's moorings that are in dredge areas.
Yeah.
And so how would, so those mooring blocks, I'm assuming they're numbered? So we would know who owns it and who, who would be.
Yeah. And when, when one comes out, it will be spray painted or something. Once it's, you know, they'll have a method of identifying exactly which one it was with. And we know exactly where it was because we have GPS coordinates.
Okay. And, and that was my biggest thing is taking.
Yeah, which one?
Not knowing who to charge and then.
Right. Because the, the mooring block was either bought by the current owner or they inherited it from whoever they got the mooring from. But they own that, that piece of equipment. So what the, what the Army Corps did is in some places, they're, they're leaving parts of the river undredged, which means instead of four feet, it's going to be 3.7 feet, which leaves about three and a half inches in some areas still on the bottom of the channel. But what that saves is up to one foot in, in dredge because they allow the contractor a foot of overdig. And when you're talking about three and a half inches, you can't really quantify that when you have an excavator shovel doing this. So they'll pay them for the foot. So that's a substantial amount of, of cost. So the volume saved by changing the way that they're going to do it is about half. So it went from 36,000 cubic yards to about 17 and a half. And really, only 9,000 cubic yards are required to be removed. But with the overdig, they know they're going to be billed for more than that. Time saved, they're estimating one to one and a half months. That ought to be able to allow the private marinas, so long as the weather holds up, to allow the private marinas enough time to piggyback and make a deal, their own contract with this, with this contractor that's on site.
The, the private marinas will be dredging about the equivalent of what the new volume of the project is. So it'll be a significant amount of sediment that's coming out of there.
Wow, that's great.
Will take all of the time that is available for the most part.
Can I go back to the moorings?
Yeah.
Do we think that there's any old mooring blocks still out there that nobody knows about? And if so, would we get charged a penal?
It's, there were a few mooring encounters factored into the Army Corps' project. So if they find something that's strange, then that's in the project. But by and large, we need to get them out of there.
Yep.
They can't, they can't have, you know, dozens of things we didn't move or.
Absolutely. I'm just like making sure that we're not going to get huge penalties because, oh, they found six out there that nobody knew about and.
If they find, if they find that and it goes beyond the tolerance, we would probably bring our own contractor in, look, get it out of there and then we'll deal with, with it. Because there's such a significant amount of money being spent by the federal government.
And of course, we've got so much sand. At low tide, you could probably see most of them.
So about that, there's about 2,400 cubic yards of sand, maybe up to 3,500 with the overdig. That's all going to the Ipswich Bay nearshore disposal site. That's just off of Anisquam. Okay? The remainder is the silt-y type material. That's going to the Isle of Shoals offshore site, which is an EPA site. It's not a state site, and that's important. And I'll explain that in a minute. It's about 30 miles from the dredge site. Okay?
And a long time to get to.
The, the good thing about that is if we get to the very last day, which is February 1, February 15, 2025, and we need a couple more days, there's a way to appeal to the federal authorities to keep dumping at that Isle of Shoals sites, site. And it's not a state site where they're going to tell you, no, we're just not going to allow you to do that. So there's more flexibility with that site, but it's very far away. Okay.
This isn't new. They were always dumping at the Isle of Shoals. This was even last year. That was what the bid specs put out there.
I understand, and when I've watched them at Anisquam, it's not as far than it is from the Essex, the landing.
Yeah.
So the yearly part of it is, it's, it's all the way downriver.
Yeah. And that should move along. That should move along. Now, the contractor needs to make at least 8,000 cubic yards of progress every 30 days. So they can't just say, "We got the job, and we're going to come whenever we want." They actually have to start making progress because the Corps has tried it the other way and got burned. The entire window is October 1 through February 15th, but they're telling the contractor they have to be done by January 31st. So there's two weeks built in, even within the allowable standard permit window for the marinas to get done. We're hoping that if we can get the contractor started right away on October 1st and they make good progress, there's going to be way more than two weeks.
And no, no big storms.
Right, that's, that's a confounding factor. To give you a perspective on this, the usual cost for a dredge project that's not in such a constrained area is $20 to $25 per cubic yard. The Essex job is planned in at about $90 per cubic yard, and that's because there's such specialized conditions that have to be met. And so, you know, we really, we really are getting the benefit of an extremely well-fought, but also well-funded project.
So can I, so there's no way of trucking it to the sand, correct?
That's a whole different permit process when you do land disposal.
And I'm just wondering.
That's not what was selected.
You know, between the marinas, you could put a truck up to it and put dirt in it, you know, put the dirt in it and move it elsewhere. I just didn't know if that was brought up.
They looked at it, but they decided, and this is the Corps' decision, to go with the water disposal, the nearshore and the offshore sites. So that's the update, and importantly, it's not an update that says, "Hey, this doesn't look good." Yes, weather could get involved. Yes, some confounding factor could get involved, but on its face, even the marinas felt like it was reasonable. There's a reasonable chance.
It's tight. It's tight, but reasonable.
But not, yeah, not unreasonable.
Yeah.
Not impossible.
Yeah.
And the marinas came in with the information they needed to be put onto the bid?
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, they're, yeah, they're, they're actually noted in the bid documents.
But there's no details there. That's something that they have to negotiate with the.
On their own terms.
Yep.
What they're saving is a second mobilization just for them would be a million and a half dollars that then they wouldn't dredge. So it's, the stakes are high. I mean, it's definitely.
And they have to go through their own permitting, which is in process, but that timing is not, you know, guaranteed either. So there's some issues, some potential places where it could, could trip.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to ratify Mr. Zubricki's approval on a request to the Finance Committee for a reserve fund transfer in the amount of $2,700 to the Centennial Grove Maintenance Account.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to ratify Mr. Zubricki's approval of a request to the Finance Committee for the Planning Board for Chapter 44, Section 33B transfer in the amount of $2,018.37 from the Planning Board Clerical to the Planning Board Technology Account.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to ratify Mr. Zubricki's approval of a request to the Finance Committee for the Planning Board for Chapter 44, Section 33B transfer in the amount of $1,316.24 from Planning Board Clerical to the Planning Board Expense Account.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to ratify Mr. Zubricki's approval of a request to the Finance Committee from the Planning Board for a Chapter 44, Section 33B transfer in the amount of $1,225.94 from Planning Board Clerical to Planning Board Notices Account.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, this will be new for you, I believe. We, as the board will recall, when we purchased 33 Apple Street and we didn't know what the town was going to do with the land, we contracted with a young man named Doug Chris to mow and harvest the hay from the field of 30 Apple Street, and we are at that point again where we need to, and we're doing this on a year-to-year basis, just because we don't want to commit to a contract with somebody long-term and not know what the town wants to do with the land. So I will entertain a motion to authorize Doug Chris to mow and harvest the hay for the field at 30 Apple Street.
Does he mow once, twice? Just once?
So moved.
Second. I had actually been thinking about this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one is the NOAA grant that we already took the motion.
We got both of them, yes.
Yes. So I will entertain a motion to authorize the signature of a letter of support for the state legislative bill authorizing the division of, oh, we did that one too. Never mind. We're tabling the next one.
I have figures now. I got the figures from the engineering contractor. So the first change order, which is change order, for this meeting, which is change order number five, the safety alarm horn removal is $1,103.11. And the well control wiring, which is change order six, and it looks like, I just got this today, it looks like they flip-flop what five and six are. So the well control is actually number five. The safety alarm, they have now listed as six, and the well control is $9,040.28. And so we still are within the contingency for the project, and those are all the change orders that we know of that need to be done in order to accomplish the project. We may hear later that there's something else they would come up with that would be beneficial while we have the contractor on site, and to the extent that we're not using the ARPA money for the, for the well work, we might use some of it for more plant work. And then, of course, just before December, if we know that we have uncommitted ARPA money, we'll use that for town operating expenses, as we discussed, so you don't lose any of it. But we're hoping to spend most of the money on the water well work and on the, on the plant.
Any other questions on that? No. I will entertain a motion to approve change order six, or change order five for well control wiring in the amount of $9,040.28, as well as change order six for the safety alarm horn removal in the amount of $1,103.11.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any items that we didn't anticipate?
I have none.
Okay. Appointments. I will entertain a motion to approve Tanis Jeffers as a firefighter EMT for a partial one-year term ending 6/30/2025.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the one-day wine and malt licenses as listed.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just a reminder that we have our next regular board of selectmen's meeting that will take place on Monday, July 22, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the third floor auditorium of Town Hall, 30 Martin Street. And then back up to licensing. We have three one-day licenses before us. Did we have a chance to review those? So they are listed as non-amplified on August 7th, August 14th, and August 21st. And I guess the only concern I have is that we had approved a steel drum non-amplified event for the same location that just took place this past Wednesday and, or the week prior, maybe. And it ended up being amplified. So this is now the second event that we approved as non-amplified that has been amplified. So just letting you know that these are not, that they're being applied for one way and then the rules are not being followed. They're just basically doing what they want anyway.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I do feel that we, we don't have penalties or, you know, or, or unless somebody complains, that's the only way we hear about it. It puts us in such a hard spot.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think that if it was said to be amplified, then, you know, the African could take the chances with what we're doing. But to say it's not amplified and then have it be amplified, I don't think that's fair or right for a whole host of reasons. And so I don't think we can approve any of that non-amplified. Something that comes in to guarantee or change or something, they need to be re-applied for with some other criteria that allows us to believe that they will be amplified or go for the amplified.
So I think that really the only, so as you know, if you don't approve them, there's, that will set the trigger for a hearing. So if you deny these applications.
Yeah, it's not actually a denial. It's you saying that you'd like to hold a hearing about these. The next time you meet is on July 22.
So I think what we need to do, either approve them or have a hearing. The other thing is, you can approve them, and between now and the 22nd, we can work on a fine structure or something that actually says.
Well, you don't really, you don't really have a basis for a fine.
No, a policy that sets forth, if you apply for one thing and you do something else, you'll be brought in for hearing, and these are the fines that we have as a choice.
Okay, well, speaking with counsel, we'd have to look at that. I can't guarantee that you have that particular authority.
Okay.
Then I think they should be, I mean, I think they should be assumed it's not, it's going to be amplified because they have.
We can't assume that, though, because it says it isn't going to be.
And we have the actual application. It definitely, just so we're clear on it, it does say non-amplified on their application? Yeah.
But if we have a hearing, do we have to advertise it 10 business days before the hearing?
We have to look at all those standards. It might say reasonable time. That's a possibility. I would have to look up the, the standards.
Well, that's, one of these doesn't meet the 30-day requirement. The other two do, which is why we have the 30-day requirement to apply for any outdoor.
And they're all till 10:00. So it says 10:00 PM.
Oh, those are the alcohols, the entertainments up top.
Eight, okay. Which fit within the policy for amplified music.
I could, how about this? What if I contact the applicant and have them put something in writing that says that they're going to abide by this? Otherwise, it's going to be a hearing, and I guess at the hearing, you could determine, because the issue here is, is not that, that necessarily that they want amplification. The issue is that they asked for something a couple times running now and didn't do what you approved.
Right, yeah, that's what the.
And that's why you would want to have a hearing, because now you're using those two events to color what, whether or not you want to give these.
And my concern is, is if we keep, if we keep approving these, which we've done in the past, and it ends up all being amplified, what happens when it's somebody else who's at another location, and they do the same thing? That's where I just feel like, if you're going to request something, then you have to follow what you requested.
Yeah, right.
And then we can say to people who do complain, "Listen, they requested it, they told us, we approved it, they have the right, have music until 8 o'clock at night." You know what I mean? We have something to say.
Well, and that's the big thing, is keeping the standard the same, making sure we treat everybody uniformly across the board and not just looking the other way because it's one particular person. That's the issue is.
And I can't speak for the board, but in the past, a amplified six to eight has been approved. And, you know, so, you know, why do something and then not follow through with that?
Correct. But that's the exact point, is just fill out the application accurately and say it's going to be amplified, and the chances are that two members of the board are probably going to approve it.
Since there's no difference in price, whether you request an amplified or a non-amplified.
Correct. You just, honesty is actually what we're looking for.
So at this point, is the board, the board wants to potentially go with me informing them that they did not get these granted and that their board will be holding a hearing?
I don't.
Or is there some other thing, some other way you want to approach it?
What happens, what's the result of the hearing?
You can deny it after you hold a hearing.
Can they change their application? They can say, "Okay, I don't want, we don't want to do a hearing. Can we change our application to make it amplified music?"
Yes, they could do that. So I could, I could suggest that, so that, look, at the next meeting, there might be a hearing, or at the next meeting, you might come in with a different application. I still can't guarantee what the board's going to say.
Right.
But it's at least matching what their intent is, right?
You're definitely not going to get it if you go for amplified, non-amplified, and your pass history has shown that you are going to amplify.
All right, well, I can lay out those options, and maybe they would choose to come back to you with a different application that matches exactly what they've been doing.
Yeah. What do you think about that, Ruth?
So you're, what you're saying is approve these as non-amplified, but tell them that if they're going to amplify these?
No. Tell them that no action was taken, and there's two options. Revise the applications to say amplified and see what the board has to say about that. Or if they want to keep them non-amplified.
Confirm it.
Yep, confirm it, and then say, "Well, then a hearing will have to be held because the board is aware of occasions when you applied for non-amplified and you amplified it."
Can we do a no action? Or do we have to deny it or?
We can just table it and bring them back at the next meeting. Because our next one is August 7th, and we meet on July 22nd.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so if we can table it, then we're not denying.
And I can explain to them what the ramifications might be, and then they can make a decision from there.
Sounds good.
So for that August 7th one, I'm just wondering whether or not, if they come back and say, "It's definitely going to be non-amplified if we could do a verbal, like, just, you know, because they're going to pay for a guitarist and a vocalist," and not being able to confirm that till the 21st.
Well, I don't see any reason why, if, if we're going on the basis that these are non-amplified, I don't see any reason why we can't approve these as non-amplified because that's what's requested. Their application clearly says non-amplified. Or we can, or we can just vote on the August 7th one and table the other two and say, "But if it's going to be amplified, we need a new application."
The reason, though, that they might not want to approve it is because they know that that's what was applied for in the past, and it didn't happen.
So, and if we approve these and then find out the next, next approval they have, which is, I think, next weekend, right? I think there's one.
We have.
If that's in place, then we can hold these as a hearing, can't we?
You would, yeah, so you would have to have a hearing on the ones that hadn't happened yet to say that you might be amending your decision on them.
Correct. That's, so it would be all the ones that are pending, happening.
After you see what happens in the first one. So you could, yes, you could approve all three, see what happens in the first one, and if you don't like what happens, you could hold hearings for the next ones.
The next one should be Wednesday, July 10.
Or have them amend their application.
Correct. They might say, if I talk to them, they might say, "Fine, we're going to, we're going to withdraw these, and we're going to come to you for the next meeting with one that says amplified."
Yeah. And if they don't get it, maybe they'll come back with the unamplified.
The only problem I see with that is that they're supposed to, I realize that they've applied. They're supposed to apply within 30 days because if we deny the amplified on July 22nd, it doesn't give us enough time to hold a hearing before they need a decision.
Right. Right, but it's all based on what they've shown you to, I mean, I can't speak for why they wrote one thing and did another. That's up to the board.
Right. No different than.
We talked about this at the last one. You know, that we were going to look at the next one because of the previous one.
The one where the awards ceremony was, right?
Right.
Then another one happened, and I think there was some kind of a video out there showing that there was an amplifier involved in it.
Yeah. Yeah, and we said that, you know, let's see what happens. Yeah, and we said that, you know, let's see what happens, you know, if they say on their application, un-amplified, and it's amplified, then we might not approve the next few. And that's exactly what happened. So if there's a way to take no action, let them come back and make their decision based on?
They could come back with these again, or they could come back with the opposite and see what the board says, and it could be approved right there. If the board says no, well then, you know?
Yeah.
So is, does the board feel comfortable with tabling the three applications to July 22nd and having Town Administrator Zubricki reach out to them?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll take no action on those three. And finally, public comment, we did receive an open letter to the Essex Board of Selectmen dated July 7, 2024, from resident Ed Neal, did everyone receive that?
Yeah.
And is there any other public comment? I'll go online first. If you have public comment, please unmute yourself, state your name and address, and you're welcome to speak now.
Do we do this?
That was the policy.
Okay, hearing no public comments, is there any public comment in the room?
Okay.
No? Is there any more questions from the board? No? All right, at 7:31 PM, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alva?
Aye.
Oh, aye, sorry.
Want to stay a while?
Nope, I, I, I'm, I'm?